The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. A new meter, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 18th Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
President.
Alderman Moizio.
Here.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge. Bishop Colburn, please.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for Alderman, for all this in authority. You said in the scripture, "We pray for them that are in authority." Tonight, we pray for those who have lost their lives in Louisiana. Help us, oh God, to realize that we are not the judge and the jury, but we are to pray for one another, to love one another. Pray thee, bless him in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you. Mayor's comments. I'd like to comment a bit on the tragic death of the police officers in Dallas and Baton Rouge. Coming from the law enforcement community, it hit me very hard. The thing that you worry about the most as a police officer is losing your life to a deranged person or someone with suicidal tendencies. When I heard about this, the first thing I did was authorize the Chief of Police to send our honor guard to Dallas to honor those officers who have fallen. Baton Rouge, I'm going to try to send our honor guard there as well. This morning, I met with the PBLC, the union, and the Chief of Police, and I authorized the police department to utilize two-man squad cars. We haven't done that since I was on the police department, but as of when the chief sees fit tomorrow or the next day, we will be utilizing two-man squad cars. And the benefit of that is an officer coming on scene has a cover car or a cover person with them in the car, and hopefully that will stop any such tragedies from occurring within our community. There's been a lot of talk about Black Lives Matter, and one thing we need to stress, and the most important thing we need to stress, is that everybody's lives, everyone's lives matter, regardless of your race, creed, color. We need to understand, we all are different in many, many ways, but we all have so many similarities. You know, I have problems with my wife, I have problems with my kids, we all do. The issue becomes now, we're human beings, and we should not take someone's life for absolutely no reason. There was no reason at all to take those officers' lives. So it was a tragedy, and hopefully it's going to stop today. Those of you who went down to SCOOP, I think you had a great time. It was a fantastic, fantastic event. There were about 30,000 people there for both nights. I thought it was great. The cars brought back a lot of nostalgia. There again, I was so pleased that downtown Waukegan was a culmination of African-Americans, Hispanics, and whites. And if you were down there, you saw that, and I enjoyed that immensely after the tragedy that occurred. I'd like to thank MS Vet Fest. They paid for $50,000 for the fireworks, and that was a great deal. That saved us substantial dollars in our budget. On August 20th, we will be conducting Vet Afro Fest on our Waukegan lakefront. It's coming back to Waukegan after an absence of 20 years. Afro Fest started in Waukegan, and it's coming back to Waukegan. BRP has donated $5,000 to Afro Fest to get it started again this year. I'm looking forward to that. To go back to SCOOP, it was successful because of David Motley, George Torres, David Marion, Jerry Cook, and the number of volunteers who gave their time and effort to make it successful. We had one incident in two nights, one incident and zero arrests. So kudos to the people who put that together. It was a well-run event. Minutes, a motion to approve the regular minutes of... Oh, I'm sorry. I have another thing. I'm sorry.
Mayor, did you mean NRG?
NRG, yes. Now, I'm sorry. NRG donated $5,000 to Afro Fest. I'm sorry. I get confused with those letters and numbers. So after a great deal of consideration, I have decided not to propose an alternate financing source for the demolition of the recently acquired BRP site. As you recall, my original proposal, after hearing from the Aldermen, that they did not wish to issue bonds for this purpose, was to use cash on hand from the stabilization fund. This fund has sufficient reserves to cover the expense. Bonds, on the other hand, would require fees and interest payments and would encumber the city with a multi-year obligation for a short-term project. This would cause, even though very minimal, an increase in the city's taxes. I do not want to increase taxes for any reason. Our goal should be to continue and not increase the taxes of our residents, but increase the base through growth, which will result in the reduction of real estate taxes for homeowners. For this reason, I will not be proposing the issuance of bonds for the demolition of the BRP site, and will instead propose that we utilize the cash in the stabilization fund for this expense, which has already been authorized by the City Council in the appropriation ordinance. So basically, we're going to take the money from the rainy day fund or stabilization account and utilize that to pay for the demolition of BRP site. I signed the contract last Friday. They have begun the asbestos abatement. I was down there Friday afternoon, and they are taking up the parking lot and taking all the outbuildings away from the main building. They're going to be 10... The people who are doing the asbestos abatement are going to be two weeks ahead of the demolition crew. So therefore, when the crew starts moving toward the building and taking it from east to west, they will be two weeks ahead of the demolition crew, which will make the work go quick. It's supposed to be finished by October. The building should be down on the ground and the hole filled by mid-October. So I'm looking forward to that. And we're going to go out to RFPs right away. I instructed our planning and zoning director to begin the process of drafting RFPs and start putting those out to the general public. Next is the motion to approve the regular minutes of July 5th, 2016. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the resolution proclamation presentation appointments, Waukegan Main Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I also like to share a few minutes talking about SCOOP, which was held July 8th and 9th and was very well attended. People of all ages enjoyed the 280 vintage cars that lined Genesee Street, the music and the ethnic food. One opportunity for improvement for next year is to have music all day at both North and South Genesee to avoid crowding in a particular area. My organization, we were on the north end of Genesee, and during the day on Saturday morning, people were coming by, but everyone kind of gravitated to the south end of Genesee where the music and the car evaluations were going on and the award ceremony. So it wasn't until later in the evening, about 7 o'clock, that the north end of Genesee became very active and busy as a result of the band coming in. So I would like to add that to the suggestion box for next year, that music be all day at both locations. And then finally, the young professionals will be holding their next First Friday event on August 5th at Greentown Tavern from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. The agenda includes food, networking, and prizes. Attendees will be invited to join Waukegan Main Street and our revitalization effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee reports. Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works met this evening. We have two items on the agenda. Item A is motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for RFPs for the Water Plant Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA system and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. This is a draft. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt two new ordinances required by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources relative to new water allocation rules and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call? Roll call.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye, only because there's no enforcement.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Special Public Safety Committee, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couldn't help it. Waukegan Party, if I may request approval to accept the Waukegan Party Department request approval to accept change order for roofing replacement. Motion to waive the bid procedure and approve a change order in the amount of $65,925 for Waukegan Roofing Company contract approval October 4th, 2014, to bring the total contract award to $135,925. Due to significant similar work and nature and scope, the vendor having maintained the original architectural plans and specifications, the change order approved will allow for Fire Station Number One barrel roof replacement to be completed and most efficiently and effectively. Funding is available for line item 100301-926-292, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Special Public Safety Committee, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couldn't help it. Waukegan Party, if I may request approval to accept the Waukegan Party Department request approval to accept change order for roofing replacement. Motion to waive the bid procedure and approve a change order in the amount of $65,925 for Waukegan Roofing Company contract approval October 4th, 2014, to bring the total contract award to $135,925. Due to significant similar work and nature and scope, the vendor having maintained the original architectural plans and specifications, the change order approved will allow for Fire Station Number One barrel roof replacement to be completed and most efficiently and effectively. Funding is available for line item 100301-926-292, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman. Next, under Old Business, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft an ordinance creating a new class of license for the retail sale of wine and beer, specifically EEB. This was held over by Alderman Cunningham. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moizio. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your Honor, I had an opportunity to speak with several small business owners, specifically in my ward, and heard from those outside the ward. Did get a chance to speak with some other Aldermen, and it sounds like there's a consensus that this is not a problem as relates to the small business. I disagree. I disagree on these terms. Your Walgreens, your CVS, your Aldi, having a liquor license is not, I repeat, is not their main way of generating revenue. If you take a look at the small business, it was going to affect... That is their only source of generating revenue. Now, I know some of you probably are not used to... I don't understand how a small business can be affected. When you take away 5%, 10%, potentially 15% of their core business, that's a major hit, in my opinion, to the small businessman. The major corporations often find ways to get around and making themselves profitable. They have the deeper pockets. I think for our small business people in Waukegan specifically, I can't tell you what happens to other communities, but in our community, and I'll take example, that liquor store only sells liquor, beer, and wine, no groceries, no prescription drugs. You take away that 15% minimum that's going to affect them, and that's going to hurt their bottom line. I just ask that we be cautious and understand that we are here to protect everybody in the City of Waukegan, but our small business make up 75% to 80% of our business community. They start closing doors, the bigger corporations cannot backfill that. Their marketing does not dictate that. I disagree with creating these licenses. Let's just take a look at what happened with the Riverbowl gambling. We opened that floodgate, and what happened? I know some people may say, "Well, it's equal opportunity." But it is our responsibility to protect our local business, people, and resident. That's what we're charged for. And that's where I'm at. You know, I grew up under that small businessman, Waukegan Fruit Market, Mr. Gordon, Own Paper Route, S&amp;W. So I'm just, you know, I am more partial to the small business and how it affects them than some of the major corporations. And not saying that we don't need them, but they have other means of generating revenue that can still help our city and not hurt the small businessman. That's my opinion. That's why I held it over. And obviously, you have enough for the votes to pass this, but I caution you. Down the road, there's going to be others who are going to be asking for this. What are you going to do then?
Alderman, with all due respect to you, Aldi sells off-brand beer and wine. There are no Budweisers or Pabst or that type of beer. It's an off-brand, that for wine and beer, no whiskey whatsoever. I talked to several of the local businesses, and they don't see there's going to be impact whatsoever because their customers are their customers. Me, for instance, I've gone to Rotis for 40 years. That's who I'll go to. The only people that these people will attract are the people, the ones who are spur-of-the-moment people who just grab something on the way out. The ones that I talked to had no issues with this. They're so far removed from these businesses, especially the Aldis out at... That's going to be going out by Fountain Square, that it doesn't really impact them whatsoever. So that's the response I got when I checked. I don't know if any of the Aldermen checked themselves. And did you talk to anyone?
I just kind of looked at other surrounding communities as well and how are they handling it? Because if you go into communities like Libertyville and Lake Bluff, all of the grocery stores will sell beer and wine, and yet their local restaurants and bars have still done quite well. Most people who have a local tavern are going to stay with that local tavern. That's kind of a destination, a place to go, rather than necessarily going to compete with Aldis. I think in order to have Aldis, that's part of their overall, how they come into communities. That's what they want. And I think in order... We need to have the base of some of these national chains in order to help our economy as well.
Your Honor, and I respectfully accept everybody's opinion. The question would be, now that the Aldis has it out in Fountain Square, don't tell me that the Aldi on Lewis Avenue is not going to want the same thing. They're going to. It's cost of doing business.
It's by square footage, Alderman. $18,000 to $29,999.
And, Your Honor, I hear that, but they do fall into the convenience store. So the purpose or the objective behind what they're asking for is to open those floodgates for others. And I'm going to be very specific, and I'm very partial when it comes to the southern part of our city. And let's be clear what the southern part of our city is. Washington going south is considered the south side. I know a lot of you are confused that the south side is just First Ward, but Washington going south is the south side of Waukegan. I'm breaking this down from a marketing standpoint. There is no major grocery store on the south side of Waukegan except who? Walmart.
Fresh Foods.
South side of Waukegan.
Fresh Foods. On Lewis Avenue.
It's on Washington and Belvedere.
Save you? Save.
Yeah, save.
That's not a major grocery store. Fresh... Fresh... Okay. Maybe I'm... Let me explain. Walmart is a major grocery store. Jewel's a major grocery... Those particular stores don't get the same breaks as your Jewel, Freshmark. So they don't get the... So when it comes from a cost standpoint, that every dollar counts for these small businesses. Believe me, folks, I know. I've seen Mr. Gordon M. I've seen Pete, how they put things together for these packages. So to say those other communities... Let me help you with those other communities. Those other communities don't have independent liquor stores. They... We have independent liquor stores, Jackson and Belvedere, Washington Park, Belvedere, on up the street, I forget the name of that, in the Hobo Shopping Mall. Those are independent liquor stores only. No food, no groceries, no anything else. So when you take away, and Mary, I do agree with you. Part of their marketing is, when they come in and get a case of milk, some eggs, they can pick up a six-pack. But that's taking $10 away from that small store. In the area that First and Second Ward represent, that will hurt over time. That's all I'm saying. Be more conscious as to how the small business is affected. If you can't tell me that all those new gaming machines did not affect the bottom line of the smaller ones. If we didn't have them in those particular places, then those other ones would be making money for the Waukegan people. I'm only specifically talking about Waukegan. Corporate America, let's get real, we know we're going to need corporate America. That is fundamentally, we cannot live without them. I just think on this situation, they can live without this extra additive. Someone said earlier, "This is really not going to add to their bottom line," and it won't. This is going to be a more convenience for these establishments. And I agree as a consumer, but I think we have to outweigh that sometimes, what's in the best interest of all of our small business people. That's just my opinion. I'm done with it. You want to call for the question, go ahead, but that's how I feel about it.
Mayor?
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Thank you. Just, can you refresh my memory? How many establishments will this affect, again?
This will be one Aldi's and three Walgreens.
Which Walgreens would those be? Which ones are those?
All three are. Walgreens is the first time I sent Aldi, Alderman, a copy of the waiting list for business licenses.
So we're talking Sunset Louis.
Walgreens was number one on the list. They've been there for four years. So this affects three Walgreens, currently one Aldi's.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler. Alderman Ziegler.
May.
This is to draft only. This is only to draft.
No. No. No.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Okay, it doesn't pass. Okay. You do realize that my responsibility as mayor is to broaden our tax base. You all know that. Just remember this vote tonight. Thank you. Next is the new business. Item A, approval payroll dated July 8th, 2016, in the amount of $1,000... I'm sorry, $1,450,831.97. And final payout dated July 8th, 2016, in the amount of $4,498.39 and $30,919.28. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Approval of bills dated July 18th, 2016, in the amount of $3,111,172.35. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Item C, approval of raffle sales application for the Waukegan Arts Council. Motion by Alderman Villa Lobos, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, approval of block parties. Motion by Alderman Villa Lobos, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item E, accept and place on file the monthly treasury report for the month of June 2016. Motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the use of the Stein Pavilion for the Soulful Sounds Music Festival on Friday, September 2nd, 2016. Motion by Alderman Villa Lobos, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item G, motion to settle Elizabeth Garcia as mother and nature guardian of Jonathan Garcia, a minor, and case number 13... And Alicia, a minor, and case number 13CV08955, for the total sum of $55,000. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. This is the...
This is the matter that we had discussed in executive session last council meeting, and therefore I didn't, it didn't come through insurance committee because we'd already vetted it in its entirety.
And you, as our corporation counsel, we have something to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Abstain.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest? Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Abstain.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Item H, motion to adopt the most recent State of Illinois Department of Labor Lake County prevailing wage for July 2015, which is in the most recent published Lake County prevailing wage. This is pursuant to an ordinance of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, ascertaining to prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works of said cities, ordinance number 09058, passed June 5, 2009. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
There are no ordinances or resolutions. Aldman, Aldi's time, Madam Clerk.
Jacquel, Jacqueline Bell?
My name is Jacqueline Bell. Can you hear me now? I live in the 200 building downtown. And the, the bedbugs are so bad. I just had open-heart surgery. I'm a diabetic. And when these bugs bite me, they get, my wounds get really big. I went to the hospital, and they told me that I am allergic to these bugs, too. Housing has come into my apartment four times stating that there's no bedbugs in there. I brought them proof. Today, I pulled some bedbugs out of my body. I kept feeling something in my skin, and they were bedbugs. And I don't know what to do. I need somebody to help me. I need some help because they keep saying the bedbugs aren't there. And then there's other people in the building that they're doing the same way. It's like, I'm thinking, are you an orc and friends, or y'all helping each other and don't wanna pay something or something? But it's killing me. And my feet, my feet swell up because I'm a diabetic. If I sit in a chair all night because I'm scared to get in my bed, my feet swell up. The doctors are threatening to cut my feet off. I need somebody to help me. I don't know what else to do.
Your Honor, I, Your Honor, I've asked, I've asked, I gave her my card, and I would work with her, but I think maybe Dave, maybe you assign Dave to talk to the...
One last thing?
We'll probably make the call in Chicago. Oh, no, no, no. Maybe you say 200 Julian?
No, 200.
No, 200 building by the three.
Oh, okay.
Ma'am, I've dealt with this issue with Charles Chambers before. I will call him in the morning and explain to him what the situation is. Okay?
Yes. I talked to housing today. The gentleman by the name of Mr. Pruitt, Pruitt, he was extremely rude, extremely, as though he didn't care about me at all. And I've shown them these, they said, well, these aren't bedbugs.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
They might not be bedbugs, but they're in my house, living with me.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll make the call in the morning, ma'am.
Thank you. Vicki Scott?
Hi, my name is Vicki Scott, and I live, I don't wanna say where I live, but I am concerned about a couple of things. There are potholes on my street in front of my house. They, the people have come and filled it, and it goes back, the potholes come back. They fill it, the potholes come back. It's on Fourth Street between County and North Avenue. So, I'm not sure, you know, how we can get that settled, but I would appreciate if someone takes care of that. The second thing is there, at 709 North Avenue. I've been a resident, I'm a resident of Waukegan over almost thirty years, and I'm concerned about my neighborhood, my husband and I, we're a neighborhood... Block captains. And so, on that stretch between Franklin Street and North Avenue, I'm not sure, it needs to be cleaned up. I'm not, the, there's vegetation, and then you have a code in your city, in your code, you have Section 6408 about obligations to owners and vacant people with owners. So, I think that something needs to be done about that because it doesn't look good. We need to take care of that. And then, on six, at 614 North Avenue, there's a vacant building on the corner of North Avenue and Fourth Street. There's, there's obligations to the people who own these, own this properties, properties. And I think they need to keep, I call my Aldermen, and I talk about it, and something gets done, and it's not consistent. It should be consistent. We try to take care of our properties. We try to make sure the neighborhood is, you know, we, we just try to work on it. And I think that it's an obligation to people who, who own property to keep their property up. There's the vegetation, they come and they take care of part of it, but the back of it, it just doesn't look good. I think that if we're trying to take care of people who live there, take care of their property, then the people who own the property that's vacant should take care of theirs. And then, again, between North Avenue, North, I mean, Fourth Street and Franklin Street, the landlords who own the property on the right side, it's 709 North Avenue, they should take care of that property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Roy?
Roy Chikowsky. At 509 Sheridan. And earlier, for the people in the audience that weren't here, what we did was, we did a little bit of a presentation on Select USA. I wanna thank the city council for having us over, you know, to discuss that. And one of the functions that we did was, we brought twenty-three Chinese companies here to the chambers right here in Waukegan. And the mayor of Waukegan did a question and answer with these people for one hour. So, to record the event, it was, it was pretty interesting because when I was in Washington after this all occurred, the Chinese who were, the Chinese who were in the delegation, they came over to our booth that we had there, and we had a picture of the mayor, you know, talking to everybody at our booth. And they were like, we wanna sign this picture and send it back to the mayor and tell him how much we appreciate it. So, what this is...
Mayor, I'd like to present this to you.
Oh, thank you.
Nice.
Thank you, right. That was a great time.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I certainly appreciate that we had a chance to show this to you. And at the same time, we have a very beautiful city here. And I think that, especially when you show it to people who don't live here in Waukegan, that they look around, they say, man, this is quite a place. So, thank you very much, and thank you, the citizens of Waukegan, and the council, and everybody. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Alderman Tempest?
Yes, a person brought up 709 County. Dave Marion has some information. I think the council should be aware of that now, if you let him speak in regards to that.
Mr. Marion, 709? 709 North Avenue, is that due for demolition?
We're pursuing demolition. We've done the title search. The corporate counsel and I have talked. He's assigned it to Troban Babowitz, if I'm not mistaken. And we're moving forward with track and judgment for full demolition.
Okay, thank you.
And this has been going on for a while, hasn't it? Has it, has it, the building's been empty?
As you know, it's been vacant for, off and on for, let's say, four years now. We had it boarded up tight on your call a month ago, I think, and I had it boarded up the next day. So, that's why we've decided it's time. The owners are gone. It's a tax buyer who's doing absolutely nothing.
And we're gonna ask for demolition?
Correct, sir. We're gonna go all the way to the ground.
Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
Good evening, Mayor Motley, city council members. Thank you for taking the time to, to listen to all our pleas. Really appreciate it. It's really important to have people, you know, listen to the needs of their community. I'm here tonight to let you know of an event that's happening in Chicago on August 3. The EPA will be holding a public hearing for their clean energy incentive program. And there will be members of the Waukegan community attending this meeting. This program specifically focused on getting the state to put pressure or more so incentivize local governments to help communities transition towards a more clean energy state. Proceeding from, from Waukegan on August 3, a bus will be leaving to attend the public hearing. And there will be members of the community testifying to the EPA, giving them our case as, for why our community would be a good candidate for this program. I will be one of those people. It's really exciting. And I guess I'm here to invite you, to extend an invitation out to you. I think it'd be a really big step in helping Waukegan transition towards a more sustainable state. And seeing as all you play a key role in the development of our community, it would really speak strongly to see core supporting members make a presence at this, like, monumental event. Yeah, I guess as a, as a closing statement, here, and they gave me a script, but I didn't follow it. I'm part of the Clean, Clean Power Lake County Campaign. And I'm sure you've heard of our efforts in trying to transition Waukegan towards more clean and sustainable energy sources. So, if, if your interests fall within the line of, would you like to see within what we'll be testifying about, please join us. I'd be really excited to have you onboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Keith Turner?
Thank you very much. It's been quite a while since I addressed the council. I mean, this is really quick. First of all, after the mayor's comments, I feel compelled to just touch on the recent issues that are going on around the country with the police or the anti-police sentiments. And I'll tell you that my name is Keith Turner. Not only will I stand behind the police, I'll stand with them. Write that down, Clyde. Keith E. Turner, get it straight. So, the way, the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about a fundraiser. It is for, it's called Walk for Awareness. And this is in honor of the three policemen that we lost to suicide a couple of years ago in a two-year period. The tie-in is suicide awareness, and the fundraiser is for the Freedom Farm, which is a veterans farm up in Wadsworth where veterans suffering from PTSD can go and have a relaxing venue just to sit and do nothing, or they can work with the animals. They can plant and garden or whatever they wanna do, but it's for veterans. The entry fee is, it's a five K walk, twenty-five dollar entry fee, but you get about half of that back with a free lunch and a free T-shirt. And if you have any questions or would like to contribute, please contact me or Tom Granger at 84741, 8474172495. And I wanna thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Clay McLamar?
Good evening, council members. If y'all remember, a few months ago, I spoke about an event that we have here every year. We've been doing it for six years, the Yellow Set, Chicago-style stepping. Well, this is the weekend for our Yellow Set. And I wanna thank our city treasurer for giving me the idea because every year, one of our cars always get towed from over at the Sundance. He gave me the idea to go over to the LA Fitness and talk to them, and they talked to us. So, they allowing us, thank you, Tom, for sending me over there. They allowing us to park over there, so hopefully, we won't have no incidents over there with them taking our cars and everything. And it's real good for the city of Waukegan. The event starts on Thursday. It goes from Chicago and comes all the way back here. We have some sponsors, which is the Spring Hill Suites Marriott, the Holiday Inn, and even the Red Roof Inn in Waukegan. We have some honorary members, which is our Alderman Sam Cunningham and our state representative, Rita Mayfield. This year, we got new sponsors, Congressman Bob Doe, Lake County Coroner, Thomas Rudd, candidate for the 62nd District of State Rep, Nick Seiko, and the county board, Mary Turley, and John Eisenberg. This event, like I said, kicks off, and hopefully, we can have, I'm inviting y'all to come out. If you like, I'll give you a flyer when I finish this. Mayor Motley, I have here in my hands four decisions by the Attorney General on the Open Meetings Act. All four have been filed against you. And Mayor, Mayor High, the previous mayor, paid out four hundred thousand dollars on one complaint. This is four complaints. Then I have another one that's yet to be filed. All that the state attorney, Lisa Manikin, all saying that the mayor violated the Open Meetings Act. And I just asked the mayor, are you playing with the citizen's money like it's Monopoly money? Then there's one here that I'd like to speak about that our attorney, our city attorney, wrote back and actually, man, I don't wanna call you no liar, but you did not tell the truth. And when you don't tell the truth, that is a lie. And we all saw the video. And it says here that Mr. Peterson, wait a minute, it says, Mr. Peterson shouted to use profanity towards Mayor Motley. Contrary to Mr. Peterson's assertion in his complaint, Mayor Motley was not the first to use profanity in this exchange. Y'all was here, y'all witnessed it. I couldn't believe our city attorney would even say something like that. You know, and I just wanted to know, Mayor Motley, don't use the citizen's money like that.
Margaret Kraschko, five things this evening. First, the beach. Mayor, I wanna give you credit for the beach. I think that the improvements there have been fabulous, and they are quite a bit. And the community really appreciates that. The second thing, Scoop the Loop, I think the Scoop the Loop was very successful this year. It was great. David, as always, Motley, doing a great job with the music. Next is kudos to our fire chief and to our police chief. Next is kudos to our fire chief and to our police chief. They are definitely doing proactive, reaching out, doing a lot of efforts to recruit Waukegan residents for Waukegan jobs, recruiting minorities for those jobs. So, I really give them credit, and I personally met with each one of them. And the fifth item is that last time I was here, I heard a gentleman saying, you know, "Well, it's really difficult and hard to get businesses or to get investors into the Waukegan area." And I say it's time. It's time to turn that table around. I want everyone to close their eyes and imagine an investor coming into Waukegan. Let's say they invest initially $10 million, up to $100 million when it's completed into Waukegan, into downtown Waukegan, creating a very business-friendly environment. And the key to this, folks, is the price of doing business in Waukegan. You can't beat it anywhere else in Lake County. Businesses are leaving Gurnee Mills and Drove's, and there's a reason why. It's too expensive for them, the rent, et cetera. Wouldn't it be great to have 50 small, innovating, unique designer small boutiques with a wide variety of items located very close proximity to each other, not like Gurnee Mills, where you have to walk a mile just to get to one store? Also, people don't need to have 50 different shoe stores, just even having one or two is enough. An atmosphere that would complement the already existing art galleries and have someone for, something for everyone. Live music, seven days a week with top on entertainment, why not? How about a very upscale restaurant with top chefs? Huge brunch buffets on Sunday mornings. And in addition to that, how about a TV and radio broadcasting live here from Waukegan, downtown Waukegan? Not only locally, not throughout the state, or within the United States, but also internationally. I say that open your eyes, because it's just around the corner, and it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman's time.
Alderman Seager?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the Fire Department, Commonwealth Edison, and the Police Department for their quick response. Over on Elmwood Avenue, 600 block, we had two transformers fall to the ground, two poles broke. And by Friday, Friday afternoon late, those poles were up, power was out maybe half an hour at the most. It affected the west and east side of the second ward. And I was thankful that ComEd responded as fast as they did. And all the people cooperated and stayed away from the area. But I want to thank ComEd, our Fire Department, and our Police Department. Job well done. Thank you very much. Nobody was hurt at all.
Alderman Moiseo?
Yes.
Alderman Villalobos?
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to mention a couple of things. These are mostly things that transpired, but again, the scoop was amazing. It was great to see that so many people come out. I actually was able to attend both evenings, Friday and Saturday night. And again, these are one of those things that shows that there's still people that have pride in Waukegan and are looking for entertainment in downtown Waukegan. So, people talked to me. It was great to meet residents. I had individuals just walk up to me that recognized me by face, said, "You're my alderman. Nice to meet you. I have an issue." And I was like, "Wonderful, tell me, please." So, I worked on some things from that. But it's very nice just to see so many people down downtown Waukegan, you know? This has been a dialogue for years, how do we revive it? How do we revive it? Events like that kind of show that there is, there is the value downtown. So, again, thanks. It was a wonderful job put on by staff here, city of Waukegan. It was great to see my fellow aldermen at the scoop, too. It's always nice to see us around and enjoying the community as well. Second, I would also like to extend, along with Ash, the invitation to come to the EPA's hearing on Wednesday, August 3rd. I also got invited to participate in a roundtable on August 2nd down in Chicago with the US EPA regarding environmental justice communities, which Waukegan qualifies as. So, I'll be speaking my perspective about Waukegan and where we stand and how we can move forward to have a cleaner environment for our residents. And those will be heard from the individual, the US EPA. Third, I started up the trash pickups again. I've been doing it on the ward. Considering the holidays and me being out of town, there was almost about a three, four week layover where there wasn't trash pickups in the ward. But we had one last Saturday, right downtown Waukegan, before Art Walk. We had about 14 individuals ranging from sophomores in high school to sophomores in college. That was a primary demographic. So, it was great to see the youth come out. These are youth that I talked to and building relationships with. These are the people that I'm moving Waukegan forward to in the future. So, some of those students are going to Lake Forest College or out of state. So, it's really nice to try to instill in our youth that value and that, to see the community that we have here. And a lot of them do see it, and they attend the events, too, in the community, building that civic pride. Again, it takes dialogue after dialogue after dialogue, and I love doing that. And third, or sorry, fourth, again, related to community, I had the opportunity this past Saturday as well, between every bookmarking, between the cleanup and Art Walk, two block parties in the ward. There's only three blocks in the fourth ward that do annual block parties. And it just so happened this year, two streets decided to do it the same day. So, I went from one street and two blocks to the south, another street. And I grew up here on West Street, and I have no idea what a block party really is like. You know, there's no way for us to shut down West Street, because it's the emergency route. So, it's just never feasible. So, I never knew what it was like to be around a block party growing up. But to see the neighbors out, talking with each other, enjoying each other's company, the Police Department came, the Fire Department came to show, you know, the children, you know, what officers do in the K-9 units and the Fire Departments with the engines, and here's the equipment we wear. And to see the wonder in their eyes about, wow, these are amazing jobs that these people do in Waukegan, these are amazing people. Again, this builds up to my idea of where Waukegan can be, in every ward and in every neighborhood, to talk to your neighbor and know who they are and to be able to spend a day with them and appreciate each other's company. So, this weekend was very community-based for me, more than usual. So, I just want to express how great it was to see everyone, talk to everyone, hear people's concerns, ideas, lovely ideas from people. So, I look forward to just continuing on with that. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Alderman Ustam?
Thank you. Just a little friendly reminder, I had a few automobile break-ins in my ward. And just a reminder to residents, when you have your cars out at night, please remember to lock your doors. Some people have their personal things in there, like wallets and things like that. Make sure you take your things out of your car at night, and remember to lock your doors. Don't have money visible in a little cup or change out where people can see them. But the most important thing is lock your vehicles at night and during the daytime, because I think they're crimes of opportunity. So, please remember to lock your doors. Thank you.
Alderman Tucker?
Yes. Sometimes changes take place slowly, and it takes time to get things done. You got the court process you have to go through sometimes to get a dangerous building knocked down. It takes time. But the wheels move slowly, but at least they keep moving. And please be patient. But I'm always glad to hear complaints. I will come, and will do all I can to make it best for you. And the good news, Vicki, is that that building, been a long time that way, should have been down years ago, but the court system moves slowly. But you will see very shortly that that building will come down. And thank you for coming down to bring it to everybody's attention, just give me more help. Thanks.
Alderman May? I'll pass. Alderman Velco?
Thank you, ma'am. Two meetings ago, the demolition of the building at the lakefront was put on hold, was held over till the last meeting. Last meeting, there was a, I don't want to say bitter, but there was a prolonged dispute on where we were going to find the money for the demolition. It passed. I vowed that I would do everything in my power to find avenues where we could get money for the city to put forward to that or make us whole. I don't know what the hell happened here tonight. The manager at Grand, of the Walgreens, at Grand and Green Bay, had property with me, behind me, in Wisconsin. I stopped in the Walgreens last week. "Hey, Bill, I hear you guys are going to be voting on a liquor license. Beer and wine, not liquor, beer and wine." Yes, we are. Okay? I hope it passes, because we've been waiting for this for four, five, six years. Couple of meetings ago, we heard that there's an Aldi's coming in town. My wife worked for an Aldi's for 20 years. She opened up the Lewis Avenue store, then opened up the Lewis Avenue, excuse me, the Belvedere store next to Minnesota Fabrics and Kmart on Belvedere, then opened up the Park City store, and then opened up the store on Lewis Avenue again. 20 years, a tremendous company to work for. 401Ks, deferred tax, profit sharing, takes care of their employees. We had a chance to bring in an Aldi's here in Waukegan. They're leaving Park City. They wanted a liquor license, excuse me, a beer and wine license to open up their new store on 43, right by the outcroppings, by McDonald's and the UPS store there, right by Bridge Corporation that's going up. All of a sudden, this vote, it fails tonight. Waukegan, we've been talking about how we want to bring business into this town. And because of a wine and beer license, we're not going to let Aldi's build a new store here at Lake, excuse me, Fountain Square. What the hell happened here tonight? You're going to lose sales tax, you're going to lose real estate taxes, all because, if you've ever been into an Aldi store out of Waukegan, they've probably got seven or eight feet of three shelves of wine, seven or eight feet of the craft beer. That's it. They're not going to infringe on any pop and stores, mom and pop, small stores. That's unbelievable. There is no small mom and pop store in the ninth ward in Alderman, in the Alderman's ward out there at Fountain Square that's selling liquor. There is none. What are we worried about? If you want this city to move forward, I strongly suggest one of you aldermen who voted in the negative, in the majority, think about it this week and bring it up next time, because we're going to lose a major corporation coming in here for a lousy beer and wine license. And I'm sure you're not going to make Walgreens very happy either. I'm a little upset tonight, because I thought this was a sure thing. Sure thing, bring in a brand-new business here. Beer and wine license. Come on, guys, that's all I got.
Alderman Taylor?
I'm going to be more upbeat. I want to thank the Meadowwood subdivision for inviting me to come out and speak last Monday night. I also want to thank the residents of Daybreak Farms for inviting my husband, night at their family picnic last night. You know, it's just, these are times that it's great to go back and spend time with the residents and really learn who they are. So, I thank residents for that. Want to thank the mayor for meeting with one of my residents last week. I thought the man would do a cartwheel when you told him that you don't plan on raising the tax levy for next year. He was a very happy man when he left. Some upcoming block parties are August 6th in Pleasant Hill from 1:00 to 8:00, and August 20th in Bayberry 2 from 12:00 to 4:00. We are now currently working on the comprehensive plan for the River Road corridor. We had our first meeting last Tuesday. The next one will be on Wednesday, July 27th, and the following one on Thursday, August 11th. Hopefully, we'll have something to bring to council by September, so we can finally have that behind us. And last but not least, I would like to wish my husband a very happy 35th wedding anniversary. I have, you know, I really want to say, this poor man on Mondays, I lock myself down. This is, this is, this is the day to study everything. You know, I think sometimes husbands don't get the credit that they deserve, that without this man behind me, I don't know what I would do. So, I love you to the moon and back, sweetie. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
All right, Mr. Wayne, all righty. Three things. One, going to be announcing, we basically award cleanup. It is scheduled for August the 16th, 2016. This is, we call it Operation Clean Sweep, is bring out dumpsters, the help of our Public Works. We have some volunteers coming in, we're going to hit some alleys. More information will follow. Want to thank the mayor and Mr. Hagerty, along with Dave Marion, for helping out, putting this together, making me see a much broader approach of how to do this. Scooping, is scooping Waukegan, or can we say Scoop the Loop? I know somebody got some.
Just scoop.
Scoop. I want to make sure we don't mess up and we get sued over that. But anyway, what an awesome, awesome, awesome time. This is, that's the Waukegan. I think everybody has come to known in the past and looking for the future. Great job, your honor, you, your staff, and all of those volunteers that helped out. What an awesome time. And more importantly, having the alderman right there, it makes it even better. I am so proud of what was displayed over that weekend. I think we got to find a little bit more activity for our younger people to do. They just don't like hanging around us. I can say I'm older now, right? All right? But other than that, I mean, we, great time, great time, man. Just, everyone is talking about scooping Waukegan. So, congratulations to all of those involved. Last but not least, I want to congratulate and say I'm very happy for Community Summer Day Camp, which is located at Webster Middle School. I had an opportunity to go speak to some young men and young ladies over there about different things. But one of the things that was asked of me, and it happened, it had something to do with interaction with our Police Department. And I was very prepared on how to answer that. And that, and I gave to them, I said, "Listen, as young men and young ladies," and most of them were African-Americans and Latinos, and it's, and it's, folks, it's okay to say you're talking to some black boys and some black girls when it comes to how to interact with police. It's okay to say it. It is what it is. We need to start managing what it is. These young men and these young ladies sometimes are giving bad information on how to interact with our officers. The bottom line is, you can't do the things you want to do when you are approached by an officer. You can't. You may want to, you may disagree with it, but you can't. What you do is you find a person, I use myself as an example, you go to our mayors, you go to your parents, you go to your teachers, you bring your issues to them, and then we address them that way. But we can't give permission to young men and young ladies, and more particularly to black boys, black girls, Latino boys and Latino girls, that it's okay to be in confrontation with police. We all know they're not going to win on the streets. I know it. And we need to start talking about it, openly talking about it. Because the lives that matter is how it's going to affect after all this is done. I gave them exactly how it was given to me. I'm telling you, go home, talk to these young men and these young ladies about their interaction with law enforcement. We may disagree, but sometimes they do. What's going on? I heard you say, Clyde, once, you're not going to win on the streets with the police. We have to do it in an We have to do it in an orderly manner. Officers have lost their lives. Young men, black men, lost their lives. Conversation has to be open and direct. I'm thankful that our police departments and our leaders, it hasn't happened here. I don't think it's by chance, I think it's because the relationship that we have and we're trying to build. Maybe it's because Mr. Blanks, Mr. Peterson, and Clyde come up and put out some of that frustration, so they don't have to do, whatever it is, it hasn't happened here. But we must manage it right now. Go to these middle schools, these elementary schools, these high schools, and talk to these boys and girls. It's just frightening, but it's very refreshing that these young men and young ladies are asking the questions. We, as adults, got to be able to answer that for them. And we can't lie to them. It is what it is, y'all. We have to manage what it is. Thank you.
Can I, I wouldn't usually do that, but can I interject with Alderman? As a teacher, I have seen an attitude, and I won't say it's any particular, you know, race or creed or anything, of a growing trend of students that I deal with at the high school, that they just, they will just defy to the point of almost having to call out a SWAT team to get them to do something. They just will not comply, I mean, to simple directions, to simple, sit down, just simple. Now, I've been fortunate, because I've been there forever, I have a relationship with a lot of students. So what you usually have to do is you have to get an adult that they have a relationship with. And then that person has to come, and that person has to, whatever you want to call, get them to comply, and then things usually work out. But what I try to tell them, that's not going to always happen in life. Someone you know and trust is not going to be there. And that's when everything goes sideways. The best chance we have is in school, is, I think, as Alderman Cunningham has pointed out, is to try to educate everyone that there is a point in your life that you have to comply to simple directions. You're always better to comply, I mean, I was always taught, I'm sure Sam was always taught, you comply, and then if you felt like you were done wrong, you went home and told your parents, and you let them, as they say, "Let the grown folks take care of it." You didn't, you didn't bring the school or the classroom to the brink of a SWAT operation because you won't comply. So I think Alderman Cunningham is right on that. I've just seen that. I've seen that more and more in our high schools that the generation just will not comply. I mean, it's, it's crazy sometimes. It very rarely happens to me, like I said, because I've been there forever, so my reputation and I know a lot of students, that seems to help. But sometimes you have other adults who don't have that, and then everything becomes a mountain and a molehill. So I think that's a good conversation, Alderman Cunningham, that we need to have, and there's no better place to have it than in the schools, because you have them there every day. You can have all the forums you want, but if it's not repeated, that if you don't comply with simple directions, there's going to be consequences. Obviously, those consequences, they don't have to be severe, but there has to be some, I mean, everybody, there's got to be consequences when you don't behave or comply, everybody knows that. But I think we need to start there and now, and I don't want to go too much longer, but the state of Illinois has, in a way, has sort of hamstrung it even more because they made a Senate bill where you can't suspend kids. And I don't think suspension is always the right answer, obviously sending kids home is not the right answer, but they've hamstrung the school in that now they don't, they cannot deal with discipline problems, they've narrowed that scope on how to deal with it. So it's going to be a real challenge for the school district to come up with strategies on how to get some of this situated. But I'm glad Alderman Cunningham has brought that up, because it's something that I deal with all the time. I've just been fortunate. But it's not always the same for other kids, and it's not always the same for other teachers either. But there is that out there. Thank you for allowing me to dovetail on that, thank you.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment on the Aldi's. We've been meeting, Russ Tomlin, Jorge Torres, Steve Martin, Noel Kishalepper, and I have been meeting with Aldi's for several months regarding moving from Park City to Waukegan. We had very exhausting meetings, very lively meetings on this discussion. They told me that unless they had a liquor license, they would not move into Waukegan. They made that abundantly clear during our last conversation last week. Obviously, the aldermen chose not to bring another business into the community and broaden our tax base, that's their, that's their call. I just direct the orchestra up here. We are going to lose substantial amount of monies in tax, in a tax revenue, substantial amount of money in a property tax. These are things that I committed to do when I, when I took office, that I would broaden the tax base and lessen the burden on our taxpayers. Tonight just shows me that several aldermen here are not serious about that. I'm serious, I'll continue to work with Aldi's, I'll continue to see if I, if I can get Aldi's to stay here regardless of the liquor license. But please understand, Alderman, it's our responsibility to lessen the burden to our taxpayers. And we can do that effectively by bringing more businesses into our community. Thank you.
Most adjourned. By Alderman Moiseo, second, by Alderman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.